I now call the East Line Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of October 2nd to order at 7:30 PM. We all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Rolla was absent today. Ms. Scott, would you please be seated? I'm here. Mr. Pett?
Yep.
Ms. Marchalitz?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Jeff Harris?
Here.
Ms. Hardy? Captain Uhas? Mr. Mulholland?
Here.
Ms. LaRocco?
Here.
Okay, life is good. We now have several public hearings tonight. The first one is the application of the East Line Zoning Commission to amend Section 1 by adding the definition of short-term rentals. I would like to open and continue this till our next meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is the application of Jerry Lockett for the East Line Park and Rec for special permit under Section 20.1-F of the East Line Zoning Regulations for property located at 16 Mostowey Road, East Line, Assessas Map 40.0 Lot 5.
Not at all. East Line Zoning Commission from William Mulholland, special permit, Town of East Line Dog Park, 16 Mostowey Road, East Line, dated September 29, 2025. The East Line Parks and Rec Department has applied for a special permit to establish a dog park, a property identified in the application as 16 Mostowey Road. The subject property is located on what is commonly labeled as Darrell's Pond Property. This property was acquired by the town in 2011. It consists of 300 acres, 200 of which are considered open space. The remaining 100 acres are under the auspices of the Parks and Recreation Commission to manage. The Parks and Recreation Commission has proposed locating a dog park on a portion of the property. It will encompass approximately 1 acre of land to be enclosed by a 6-foot-high, green vinyl-coated fence. Parking will be provided for 10 parking spaces. The zoning regulations require a special permit for all town buildings and uses. Under Section 20 dot 1 dot 2 dash F, Section 25 of the zoning regulations, provides general provisions and standards which are applicable to this application. This section allows the commission to evaluate in part the nature and intensity of the operation, the size of the site, and its relation to existing and future streets, and the orderly development of the district, along with other considerations. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a waiver or exception of the requirement to install a sidewalk along the lot frontage on Mostowey Road, as allowed under Section 24 dot 7, "exceptions." Further, regarding parking in Section 22, and specifically Section 22 point 1 point 18, "Uses Not Specified," which states, "Parking requirements for any use not specified in this section may be set by the zoning commission in the particular instance, taking account of similarity of the use of other uses for which requirements are specified herein." This provision allows the commission to set the parking requirements. I note here that while the site plan, Section 24, technically applies, most of the code is for commercial and industrial applications and uses, and is not applicable here. The applicant's representatives are here this evening and will give a presentation and will answer any questions. In conclusion, the commission should carefully evaluate the proposal for consistency with the special permit requirements, the proposed parking, and the evidence in the recording during the decision process.
Thank you. Ms. Lockett, I assume this is your chance. You're up.
Thank you very much. I'm Jerry Lockett. I'm the Park and Rec Director here on behalf of the Dog Park Subcommittee, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Darrell Pond Master Plan Committee. But tonight here we have Donna Palumbo, who is the Chair of the Dog Park Subcommittee, so I think she's got a couple remarks, and then we'll move on from there if it's okay.
Good evening. I'm Donna Palumbo. I live in Niantic, and I'm the Chair of the Dog Park Subcommittee.
Please, we need your address.
133 Black Point Road, Niantic. You're welcome. Sometimes I get, I mean, just do Reader's Digest version, so we can keep it short and sweet. Dog parks are common in many communities. They add to the quality of life in our town. People of different interests require different spaces. The Dog Park Committee did its due diligence on this. Dog advocates have been working towards this for a decade or longer. I've personally been involved in this since Paul Farmiger was our selectmen, so I've worked with every selectman up until now. We've reviewed operations, best practices, evaluated town-owned parcels, raised awareness, surveyed residents, raised funds, held regular meetings, posted minutes and agendas. In addition to the Dog Park Subcommittee, the Dog Park at Darrell Pond has been endorsed by the Darrell Pond Master Plan Committee and Parks and Rec Commission. The concept of a dog park was endorsed by the Board of Selectmen that approved the concept and fundraising in August of 2024. And some good things about the dog park are, you know, gets dogs and gets improved socializations, dogs and owners get better bonding, dogs get exercise, puppies have freedom, dogs get mental stimulation, and all in all, the community becomes more active. I think if you look downtown, I worked at the boardwalk this summer, so many people want to bring their dogs in and walk them in our parks, so I have to say that I really feel that it would be a great thing to have. Other than that, I just, the committee did a lot of hard work, and I hope you consider us, and we thank you for your time.
So with dog parks, and some people may or may not be familiar with dog parks, but a dog park is, as the memo in front of you suggested, a fenced area where dog owners are able to bring their dogs, take them off-leash, and allow them to, you know, socialize, exercise, all those, all those good things that Donna just mentioned. So in terms of the property, the review process of the property did take into consideration a lot of different things. We looked at all town-owned spaces around town, and which ones were most appropriate. And it turns out that the Darrell Pond property was chosen for a couple of reasons. You heard in the memo about the parking spaces. There are already a number of parking spaces up there, about seven. We're looking to increase that to about 10. There are hiking trails and whatnot up at Darrell Pond right now, so, you know, the public is using it, but not using it extensively. The Darrell Pond Master Plan, and I guess I can show you here in a minute, on the back of this map here, we've got the Darrell Pond Master Plan, but the folks on that committee are interested in expanding use of that park and allowing more and more residents to access the park. They feel that that increased use will decrease the negative uses that can happen at the park with people using motorized vehicles up and down the trails and that type of thing. So the more people that are in the park doing things that we approve of, the less opportunity there will be for people to use the park in a way that we don't want them to use. There are some concerns about dog parks. You know, when you, when you think of a dog park in your head, a lot of people might think of a bunch of barking dogs. So noise is, is a concern, and it's something that the Dog Park Subcommittee has, has addressed. I'm going to point out our map here, and I think everybody has a map in your, in your packet as well. But, you know, the residential density around Darrell Pond, we do have neighbors that are within, you know, a couple hundred feet of, of the property, or even where the dog park is located, 300 feet is about the closest house from the closest corner on our dog park. So there is potential for, you know, some of our immediate neighbors to hear that, but we've also, you know, looking at other properties around town, this was kind of a minimal impact in terms of the community at large. There's also a bunch of vegetation in between where the dog park is and the houses, so we're hoping that that acts as a bit of a buffer. We've also kind of heard some concerns about traffic on Mostowey Road. Mostowey Road is, is really narrow at parts, and it's not, it's not designed for a lot of traffic. So in terms of how people use a dog park, you know, they tend to go up there at, at particular times of the day that work out for them. So some people, you know, they go up there for an hour just to exercise your dog, maybe at dinner, or maybe first thing in the morning, or maybe at lunchtime, or whatever. So the typical use of a dog park is, is kind of constant use throughout the day, but not overwhelming use at one particular time. So, you know, there isn't a lot of traffic at, you know, at, at one time of the day using Mostowey Road. So I think as the Darrell Pond Master Plan gets implemented, that the Darrell Pond Master Plan Committee has, has looked at some possible improvements to Mostowey Road that might be appropriate as the use in the property becomes more and more, as it, as the master plan gets implemented, more and more amenities are added. That's the type of thing that we may at that time be looking at, some kind of improvements to, to the road. And I guess the other thing I would mention is, you know, there are people out there that have concerns about safety at dog parks. So some people are concerned about aggressive dogs, or some people are concerned about maybe infectious diseases that might get, you know, passed from animal to animal in a, in a confined space, and those types of things. There are best practices and rules that we would implement that would do our best to, to do that, you know. So anybody who had an aggressive dog, you know, they would, they would have to remove it. We would do our best to enforce rules that would require every dog in the park to be, have, be up to date on their shots, that every dog was, be a certain age before they could go into the park, because sometimes puppies don't have all their vaccinations and things like that. So, and as you can see on the map here, there's kind of a separate section for small dogs and a separate section for big dogs, so that the, you know, that everything is kind of safe and whatnot. So through the rules and the operation of the park, that's where we would do our best to address any kinds of safety concerns like that. And I think at that point, I would just open it up to any questions that anybody might have, or I could talk a little bit more about the, the map here, if everybody's got a.
Madam Chair, if I may briefly, Jerry, hours of operation?
Hours of operation would be consistent with other parks, sunrise to sunset. It would not be open, you know, during darkness or anything like that, so just daytime hours.
Would you have any onsite cameras?
So the question was, any onsite cameras, at least to start, that we don't expect to have many amenities there, but it is something that is a concern at, at kind of all of our parks. It's, some parks, we do have cameras at. It certainly is a possibility, and if, if conditions were to require them, I think that would be something that we would move towards.
And you speak about best practices. Would there be a staff member on site, or is that time-to-time, or as necessary? How will that operate?
So the question about having a Parks and Rec staff member on site, we would not have a Parks and Rec staff member on site. There are dog parks that sometimes have volunteer groups that, that tend to have people at the parks at particular times to even do dog training classes, or, you know, obedience classes, or, or things like that. But the intent would be to have this be a use-at-your-own-type-of-discretion-type park. Parks maintenance staff would be going to the park, you know, on a regular basis to empty the trash, to mow the grass, to weed whack, make sure the parking lot is, you know, and the dog park is inspected for safety, that kind of thing. But we wouldn't have anybody there daily from start to finish, no.
And how are the waste handled? The waste, animal waste?
Yes. Animal waste, that is something that we would, people around town, I'm sure dog park owner, or dog owners know where all of our mutt mits are in town. We, we would have, definitely have those stations where people could just grab a mutt mitt and dispose of the dog waste, and there would be a, a trash can right there where that would be, and emptied regularly. So it really is up to people to police themselves, and I, you know, I can imagine, you know, if somebody couldn't pick up something for some reason, I'm sure somebody else here at the park would be interested in, in keeping it clean and probably lending them a hand.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Madam Chair, and thank you for.
I have many questions. And first, I need to say that it is the responsibility of the zoning commission to talk and think about the health and welfare of all of our citizens. My first question is, I noticed that you have located this to the right side of the driveway, which is not level. Little bit of slope there. And Darrell's Pond is at the bottom of the slope, and it feeds into Latimer's Brook, which feeds into Long Island Sound. So my question, comment is, how are you going to stop any fecal problems from occurring, since 1 gram of dog feces contains 23 million coliform bacteria?
Okay, so the question is, on the property, there are setbacks from waterways, and the property here, where the location of the dog park is, is over 300 feet away from any water source. The area of the dog park is confined by fences, so any, any type of waste or whatever that was inside the dog park is going to be policed. So I, I don't know if that.
Now, how can you say it's going to be policed if there's not a town employee up there to make sure people are following the rules, getting the puppies checked for their shots?
Sure.
Wreckers, all that stuff.
Sure. So I would say the, you know, my phone, I have a direct line on my desk, and I'm sure that, you know, at, whenever there's an instance of somebody who's not using the, the park in a, in a, in the right way, my phone is going to ring. If there's a, if there's a bunch of waste on the ground, my phone's going to ring, and our Parks crew would go up and take care of it. If it's somebody who's abusing the rules or has a very aggressive dog, our staff will go up there and attempt to contact whoever that dog owner is, and try to get them to supervise your dog, or, or to not bring their dog if, if that's the case. If it's, you know, depending on whatever situation happens up there, our staff will respond, you know, when notified. So.
Well, it is 22 minutes from your office to the dog park. You know that in 22 minutes, a block can happen.
It sure can, and, and I don't know that it's any different, you know, in, in other places in town. So my office is up at the community center. If I get a call that something's going on at McCook Point Park, it's going to take me maybe something less than 22 minutes to get there, but yeah, it takes time to get there. You know, if it's a, you know, a matter of, you know, we, we're going to do the best that we can do. We don't have the resources to staff it all day long, but we are going to maintain it, and we're going to pay attention to it. We're going to, you know, implement best practices to empower anybody else who's using the park. You know, like, when you've got a, a group of people, like we've mentioned before, using a park appropriately, the, the opportunity to use a park in a inappropriate way becomes less. So I, I fully suspect that, you know, all the fine users, most dog owners in town are going to be responsible users, and that is going to be a, a powerful policing mechanism to allow the dog park to, to be successful.
Now, I noticed that there's a picnic table up there. Is that going to stay?
We will have, yeah, amenities up at the park. Whether they'll be inside the fence or outside the fence, that's something that we haven't quite determined what's going in there. We do have a group of Girl Scouts who's out there making some agility equipment that we'll be putting in the dog park and things like that. But yeah, there'll be spaces for people to sit, and, you know, likely the picnic tables will be around trees or other shady spots to, you know, make it more palatable to people, but yeah.
Well, my point being that is if you're enjoying meeting and socializing with humans, you're not keeping an eye on your dog. That's my point.
Well, yeah, and I think, again, anybody who's in the park who's letting their dog run amok without paying attention, the other people in the park are going to probably have a conversation with that person, or call the Park and Rec Department so we can come and address it.
Is there going to be signage up there with the Park and Rec phone number?
Sure. Yeah, we, we have, the, I think in, in the memo that I provided to the, as part of your packet, that, you know, there's a list of, of suggested rules, or at least, you know, a kind of proposed rules. Those aren't finalized, those are just some best practice rules that we've found from our research. So yeah, those, sign with those types of rules, and the Park and Rec phone number will definitely be at the site.
Why did you pick the right-hand side of the driveway?
Well, the right-hand side of the driveway, we picked that side because, and I guess the answer to that question kind of involves the Darrell Pond Master Plan. So maybe if I have a minute, I'll just flip my, my map here. So I apologize that I don't have the microphone here, but I'll do my best to project. So the bottom of the map here, 161 East Line High School, to the left, Salem, to the right, so it's kind of, north is that way. But the entrance that you, to the dog park would be right down here. You can see the whole property. Mr. Mulholland mentioned it's 300 acres. All of the green is 300 acres that the town owns. The part in this black outlined spot, that's the part of the park that Parks and Rec maintains. The parking lot is right here. The dog park would be kind of regular, if you can, if you're, see this little blue dot, that's number five on the map. That's where the, the dog park would be. The question is, why would we put it there and not on the other side of the road? If you see this little dotted section here, that is actually kind of an environmentally sensitive area of the park, where there's a, a small population of New England cotton tail. So we don't necessarily want to disrupt that as much as possible, so we took the existing area of the park that's already mowed to, you know, we, we mow it regularly, and if you were up there, you saw that it's mowed. We might have to do a little bit of work on grading to, you know, eliminate some of the more severe parts of the slope, but in general, dogs don't care if it's a little bit sloped. You know, the park that's at the parking lot to get into the dog park, that is going to be, you know, nice and level, accessible. Once you get inside the dog park, then, you know, there may be some slopes and stuff like that, but again, I don't think the dogs are going to mind that.
If anybody wants, you guys can come around and look at the map, if it's okay.
Feel free.
I have a question, too, when it comes to the traffic. Like, right now, there's about six parking spots.
Yep.
And you want to increase it about 10. Are non-residents allowed to use it? Is a question that I also would like to ask. I go up there frequently, and there's a lot of cars there in the morning, and at, at late, mid, you know, late afternoon. There's a lot of trails up there. There's like, that parking lot is full on multiple, like I said, I go there weekly. So I'm concerned about the impact of the traffic. Like, have you done a study or anything like that? And I'd like to know what your safe best practices when it comes to spraying for stuff. I mean, do, do they spray for things? Because there's going to be, you know, a, a high volume of, you know, animals in there, and we would hope that everybody would be honest and do the right thing, and don't bring your pet if it's sick, and, you know, et cetera. But is there a best practice to spray? And, and if so, what are we spraying exactly?
Couple of questions there. I'm going to try to get them. The first question, are non-residents allowed? The answer is yes. Just like any other park in town, non-residents are free to use.
So do you think that since non-residents are, you know, going to be permitted to go there, that 10 parking spots would be enough? Considering people hike up there regularly, daily?
Right now, considering the use of the, that we see at Darrell Pond, plus the addition of the dog park, I, I don't think that that, the number of parking spaces is going to be sufficient when, when Darrell Pond, everything in this master plan is implemented. But I think that the 10 spots that are being proposed for the dog park, at least initially, before we expand to these other activities, is going to be appropriate for all but the, you know, the most severe times. So I think, just in answer to that question, I, yes, I think the parking spots are going to be sufficient. I don't think that, you know, we don't really have a means of not allowing non-residents to be there. So also, you know, Waterford's got a dog park, Rotten's got, got a dog park, other towns have dog parks. So people, you know, there are other opportunities for people who don't live in town to bring their dogs to dog parks as well. This is just, you know, East Line's more convenient for our residents, that type of thing. But could a non-resident come? Yes. In terms of spraying, I'm not sure exactly what type of spray you're, you'd be talking about, but a dog park in general is going to be pretty low maintenance. The dogs are going to be running around, and it's likely not going to take a lot of mowing or anything like that, because it's just going to get, you know, inside the fences are going to be high-traffic areas that the grass isn't going to, to thrive in that kind of situation. But, so, you know, there isn't any kind of a, you know, I guess.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
And in your research, have, has your organization spoken to veterinarians about what they think their professional opinion is on dog parks?
So, yes, there are, just like anything else, there are different opinions on people with.
No, have you, have you guys done it? Do you have that data that we can see, perhaps?
I don't have, no, I don't have a survey of, of local veterinarians.
Why didn't you have, you had, like, maybe a vet on your staff, or somebody like, you know, I, you know, since a veterinarian is a doctor of animals, I'm just kind of curious what a veterinarian would, what their opinion would be on dog parks.
Yeah, I think best practices from veterinarians are make sure your dog is vaccinated and, and protected when it goes to a dog park. You know, I, I think if owners protect their dogs, you know, I'm protecting my own dog, and when I protect my own dog, I'm also protecting everybody else's dog. If somebody goes up there and their dog isn't vaccinated, they're the ones at the most risk.
I agree.
You know, so I think.
Who's going to be in charge of making sure that dogs that are there, that they are vaccinated? Like, you know, just ask them, because I think for the most part, people are honest. But then you're going to have people that aren't, so we need to talk about, well, what's going to happen? What's in place? What have you decided to put into place when something like that does happen? And then if something does happen, as far as fighting and stuff goes, you know, the police department, if they can't get in touch of you, with you, then we're going to be calling the police department.
So the, the dogs in town are, you know, we have a, a town clerk who handles dog licensing, you know, and dog licensing, and, you know, there's, there's records of which dogs are vaccinated, which dogs are not. So, you know, the, the question about, you know, having somebody with an unvaccinated dog, or how do we check that? I mean, the easy way to check that is to make sure that every dog up there has got a little, you know, tag on their collar. And, and, you know, if, if, if users, again, see that there's a dog up here that doesn't have their, you know, their registration tag for the town, or a town, you know, that's, that's a pretty strong indication. And, and that's something that we would deal with on a, on a case-by-case basis, or that other users of the park would just call their, call that to the owner's attention and ask them to be, you know, responsible pet owner, and go register your dog, get them vaccinated, and, you know, and then enjoy the park.
I have a question about, since it's going to be a public area, if somebody comes up to me, and if I decide to be belligerent, I'm not going to answer your question. Who's going to be there to make me answer the question, is what I'm concerned about?
Okay.
And to keep all, everyone's, you know, the pet safe, you know what I mean?
So I would, I would say this, it's the same, it's, it's the same situation that we have in, in pretty much any park right now. I know Donna Palumbo here, our chairman, spends a good part of her summer out on the boardwalk greeting people during the summer. Today, there's nobody down there greeting people on the boardwalk. There's nobody at McCook Point Park greeting people using the, the, the playscape equipment. There's nobody at, you know, these town locations, there's nobody on the trails right now asking people. So, you know, the, the answer to the question. you know, the, the answer to the question is this, it's really, this is no different than any other park in town, that, you know, that we're going to provide the same level of responsible supervision of the dog park as we do for other areas of town, you know, to the degree our resources allow.
So, what do you have in place for whenever, like, right now at McCook's Park, I mean, you see stuff all the time, and we've all been to there and stuff, I've seen any given time, off-season, dogs that are not on a leash. I have a Corso, it's a big dog, and I've had little dogs come up and bite my dog in the face, which, she's, I mean, she's not gonna do anything, but it happens a lot, you know, I mean, but, but who, you know...
So, one of the, one of the reasons...
And they're defecating on the beaches too, so they're, it's gonna happen at the dog park as well, I would imagine.
I, I would hope, I would hope it would get better and better. I mean, but I take your point. I mean, there are people that, you know, that speed down the street. There are people that, you know, don't cross across, crosswalks. There are people that do all kinds of things that they shouldn't do. And, you know, we're not able to, you know, eliminate the possibility of somebody doing the wrong thing. I think what we're trying to do here is we're trying to provide an opportunity for people who want to have a place, like you mentioned, to have their dog off-leash where that is appropriate, where that, where they're, they're seeking that socialization for their animal, where they're seeking that opportunity to allow their pet to exercise, where they're allowing people to enjoy that. That's, that's what we're trying to provide. We're, we're not trying to keep everybody from, you know, not being mean or irresponsible. We're trying to provide opportunities for people to do good things.
In your plan, is there any shade feature that is proposed?
Yeah, there are trees there. Yeah, there are some pitch pines up there, there's a big legacy oak, you know, those kinds of trees and things like that. And it may be something that over time, that we would even want to construct a shade structure, you know, to, to provide even additional shade. So, yeah, those are...
And this is something that's kind of off-topic. Pitch pines are on the imperil list in Connecticut. You cannot cut them down.
No, and they're there.
I just thought I'd throw that in.
They're there.
Yep.
They also provide shade.
So, and one more quick question. You, your staff is gonna check the area daily, take a run out there daily to make sure pet feces is picked up, and pick it up inside the enclosure as well, correct?
We will maintain that property daily, just like we do any other property. We visit Parets Park, McCook Point Park, Cheney Park, Vets Park. We visit those properties daily and maintain them.
Thank you.
So, there's six to seven parking spaces, depending on how fat and wet your space is. Are you gonna tear out that parking lot to put a new one in, to accommodate?
No, I think, I think the engineer was talking about just kind of, you know, putting a pavement cut and adding some additional pavement to make it, add those additional spaces.
And who's locking and unlocking this?
I don't think that there won't be a lock on there. You know, it'll have a gate. If, if there were a reason to have it locked, we would put a lock on the gate and, you know, prevent people from going in there. But basically, the, the park is open from sunrise to sunset. There is no gate that would prevent anybody from going into the park or coming out of the park. We do have two parks in town that do have gates. One is Parets Park, and one is McCook Point Park. And we do have a park closer that goes there every night and closes the gate. But whether that's appropriate for Darrell Pond or that whole property, it's something that could be added in the future, but right now, it doesn't have that, and I wouldn't anticipate adding that unless there was a demonstrated need that kind of suggested that we needed to do that.
And your fencing is six feet high?
That's what the plan calls for.
Well, how did you pick that figure?
That's just a standard height that I think is going to be safe enough. There isn't any dog that's gonna jump over a six-foot-high fence, and, you know, it's, that's...
So, you're gonna keep dogs in, but your plan is, you have no plan to keep deer out?
Yeah.
Deer require an eight-foot fence.
Okay, so, if a deer were to get into the dog park, I guess I would be, okay, I hope he can get out. You know, I just...
I'm not concerned about Anzudik organisms cross-contaminating other species?
I don't, I don't have any information on cross-contamination of, of different species, but I would imagine that, you know, the, certainly during, anytime there was a dog in the dog park, I don't think there's gonna be a deer in the dog park. So, whether one could get in there or not, I, I think that that's something that, yeah, I don't know that I, that's a...
Well, deer, deer feces is, deers are herbivores, so deer feces is considered non, non-problematic, just dissipates. Dog feces, however, is considered a biohazardous material, and it does not dissipate.
Can I speak to the feces section here?
There'll be a chance to present, yeah. You definitely will, but just...
Okay, so...
I think maybe, can we move on with some questions? We probably have some other people that have questions.
So, I guess, are we done with that question, or was it, okay?
I'm sorry if I may, excuse me, one final question. Dogs need to be on leashes, correct?
No, not when they're on a leash.
Dogs, dogs would...
If I get out of my car with my dog, it needs to be on a leash until I get to the gate, and then I can let it run. Is that correct?
I, I think the, the way that the ordinance is written is you need to be in control of your animal, so whether that means on a leash or not, it may be subject to interpretation.
Generally interpreted to be on a leash.
Yes, generally interpreted, people would put their...
So, I get to the gate, I can unleash my dog, he can run, and when he comes to the gate, then I unleash him back up.
No, it means verbal. Like, some people, they have good verbal command over their animal, and so they will not leash them.
So, just in answer to the, the question, for, for most people, you know, the ordinance would say that your dog does need to be on a leash. When you go into the dog park, there's what you would call a Sally Port. So you would come into an area, you'd come into a small vestibule fenced area, presumably with your dog on, on a leash or in your direct control. You'd get inside that vestibule, you'd remove the leash or whatever, and then you open the gate into the dog park. So, you kind of go in, it's like going into a prison. You lock the door behind you, you step in, and then you open the door in front of you, and then your dog is free to roam. So that's kind of how the dog park operates. There's a, there's a...
How do you know what it's like to go into prison?
I've been there, Bill.
Just asking, but thank you for answering the question. I have nothing, thank you.
I mean, the water bowls?
No, not at, not at least at the beginning. We would, we would be trusting dog owners to bring their own water to the, to the park. There isn't any city water or a well that's kind of accessible right there, and we don't have any plans to add that. It's something that could be considered over time if, if the use kind of demands that. That's something that would be potential future enhancement, but certainly not something at the, at the beginning.
Did you say that it was 300 feet to the nearest residence from the corner?
The distance from the, the corner of, the nearest corner of the fence, actually from the nearest corner of this fence, and actually, I put this post-it note up there, that's about the position of the nearest house. So there's a property, this is a, this is a piece of property, from here to there is just about 300 feet. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. My only, my only concern was the neighbors. And I wanted to ask what the other choices were.
Yeah.
The locations.
Sure.
Why was this spot chosen?
So, again, going back to it, we, we looked at town-owned spaces. You know, the dog park, you know, we didn't want the town to go out and buy land to go build the dog parks. We were looking at existing town-owned lands. And we looked at town-owned lands that had, you know, a certain size. So, the, in the past, when, when Donna here, 10, 15 years ago, when they first started talking about this, they actually talked about Vets' Field having kind of a, an area there. So we, we looked at that one. It was kind of determined that wasn't the best place back 10, 15 years ago, but we looked at it again. We looked at Roxbury Road and Romanga Drive. This, we call it kind of the salt shed. There's a, an old building down there that has some open space right next to it. It's kind of below Karen Share, down the hill from Karen Share, if you know where that is. We looked at that property, and we looked at the open space on Roxbury Road and Roxbury Court. So if you're driving down Roxbury from, say, the transfer station down towards, you know, the, the prisons and whatnot, on the right-hand side, you, there's a big tract of town-owned property, and it's just called the Roxbury Road property. There's a big meadow that's kept mowed, so we looked at that one as well.
Anyone else?
Was the, was McCook's Point Park considered?
No.
I don't know much about dog parks, except they seem to be located in busy areas. Central located?
So, one of the, you know, I guess, you know, I, we did not look at McCook Point Park, and it actually, from a Parks and Rec standpoint, I guess I, maybe it's, maybe it's my personal opinion, I suppose. But McCook Point Park is a heavily used park. So, you know, couldn't really put it where we do our concerts. You don't want it near the beach and whatnot. So, just with the level of activity and kind of taking an acre out of kind of the mix at McCook Point Park, from my standpoint, would be like, wow, I, I just wouldn't even, that, that just wouldn't seem like a good idea to me, to kind of use that, that, that kind of crown jewel for kind of really what amounts to a, you know, a lower-impact park.
No, I noticed in Europe, when I'm there, dogs are welcome everywhere people are, and that's restaurants, trains, you know, everywhere. And I think that the only way that dogs can get to that level is to be socialized, and I think that, that a dog park is a way to socialize them. And I noticed that a lot of places, like Home Depot and Lowe's and places like that, allow dogs in there now. I was wondering, are more and more stores that you see in East Lime allowing that in, or what's, what's the trend been locally with, with dogs and businesses?
I cannot answer that question. That's, that's beyond my, my expertise.
I didn't have any questions now, but maybe after the public speaks, I might have some more.
So at this time, I'd like to open us up to the public for, for comments, either for or against the neutral, and I will tell you that I will give everyone a three-minute limit. I know it's pretty tacky looking, but it works.
We should probably use that up here.
So who wants to go first?
Four against.
Come on up. Please state your name.
Four against, yes.
Four, I'm sorry, are you a four or a against?
I'm an against. I am that property owner, and this is in my backyard. I live at 40 Mastaway Road. My name is Lori Zerenda, lifelong resident, and I have three concerns. One is personal, because this is directly in my backyard. I worry about my property value going down because of it. I don't want the noise in my backyard. Besides my personal issues with it, I worry about the street, especially if they're gonna continue to do more on, in this area in the future. I don't know if, I mean, it sounds like most of you have driven up Mastaway Road before, but we have a blind corner that only one car can pass by, and two cars cannot pass each other in that spot. And if people don't know the road, I mean, there's only maybe six or seven houses on the street, so we all know the road, and we know where we gotta slow down, and where we gotta be careful, and, but other people won't know that, and I think you're asking for trouble with accidents. Also, the area isn't very well patrolled right now. I can tell you, there's kids up there drinking loud, shooting off fireworks. Nobody's monitoring that area, at least not right now. So there's already problems up there. Besides the street and my own personal thing, I think as far as the town goes, people who need a dog park are people who live in apartments or condos and don't have a yard to let their dogs out in, and most of those people are down in Iannick. So I think looking at Vets' Field or Bridebrook would just make a whole lot more sense for the people who really need it. It's six miles from Main Street to Mastaway Road. That's a long way to go, just to take your dog out. And for people who need it, I think it'd be much more, it would just make more sense to have it at the other end of town. But I love my town, and please don't do this to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll do the antis first. Who would like to speak? Come on up, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Harold Henning. I live on 22 Darrell's Ridge Road, which is across the pond from this property. A lot of the topics that were raised here raised some more concern with me, but I'd just like to get back to the, one of the first topics that was mentioned, which is the noise level. The area of the park is a quiet area right now, relatively quiet. People like to hike there, jog there, walk there. And I can tell you that any noise that is made over there carries across that lake, across that pond, in that bowl shape. It, it carries surprisingly well, and there's, I think you have a little puppy, we hear it. So, we're quite concerned about the, the noise level and the change that it would bring to the whole neighborhood there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Come on up. Are you the anti or the for?
Anti.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Ann Hosking, and I live on 6 Green Tree Drive. I had to cross 161, and I'm a, to access the park, and I'm a dog owner, and my husband and I have been walking our dogs up at the property literally daily for the past 15 years. So I feel I can speak to some of the problems of current usage. One of them, and ideally, the, the concept of dog, dog owners being in control of their dogs if they're off-leash. We have two very big dogs, and they're always on lead. And more often than not, what ends up happening up at that property is people will get out of their cars, let their dogs out, and then say to us, my dog is friendly. They come charging up to us, and the number of vet bills we have incurred because our dogs have been harnessed and other dogs have come up and instigated something is astronomical. So in the ideal world, I get it, you would escort your dog on lead to this fenced-in area where they can then run around, but that is truly not the case. Additionally, as far as the cleanliness aspect, we've walked those trails extensively for the past 15 years, and even now, people don't clean up after their dogs. Or they bag up the waste and leave the bags there. And in reference to your point, as the dogs continue to use a park and erode the soil, the water runoff problem with contaminated feces is gonna be worse, unless you're planning on re-sodding the fenced-in area. So again, my bigger concerns are safety. Having walked up 161, or crossing 161 onto Mastaway Drive is already, with the limp, the amount of traffic that's there, is already horrendously unsafe. So if you add more, I, I think there's a disaster waiting to happen. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Can I go, I'm ambivalent. Can I go from the against towards the four and speak in between?
Can you, can you wait for the, for the, the not-wanted, to have your stance?
Hi, Jeff Law, 10 Mastaway Road, probably Lori's closest neighbor. I too am sincerely concerned about property value, the noise, the fact that nobody, there's no patrol up there to reduce that. We have motorized vehicles with ATVs, motorcycles, dirt bikes, you name it, they're riding the trails all the time. As the commissioner, you probably see these ruts up there already. My bigger concern is the traffic that is coming through there, the dangerous curve that is just past my driveway. I often stop, excuse me, I often stop nearly 100 feet before my driveway because it narrows up to allow somebody to come down just by looking for headlights or... up to allow somebody to come down just by looking for headlights or whatnot. The town does a great job of keeping the road clear. They actually kill my wife's ferns every year, but that's besides the point. But the no, the noise level that comes from that park that we already have existing, and to the point of the deer getting into that fenced-in area, anybody who lives there knows we have bears too. Okay? The bears are definite feeding, and if, if they're not up there emptying the trash every day and whatnot, there's going to be more bear activity than we already have now. Property value impact is high on my list. I've been a resident for 11 years now, happy as can be, love my property, happy I bought it from the people that we did. But wildlife is, is a huge thing, and I went up there to be quiet and yet have everything I needed within just a couple of miles of my town. The one couple of questions that I had that were brought up, who is the enforcement? We, you talked that it's going to be self-inflicted. Are we talking about a, I don't mean to say this, but a quote Karen? What happens when the Karen gets going? That's up there and doesn't like, to your, to your chagrin, Debbie, that there's going to be an argument across town, 60 miles, 22 minutes, police rarely seen on our road, which frankly is fine by me, because there's not a lot of stuff. But right now, we have traffic going in and out of there all night long. Two cars go in, five minutes later, two cars come out. Don't know what's going on, not up there with a camera, not up there looking to create problems, but definitely property value, the noise, and our wildlife impact. Thank you.
Any more against? Please, come on up.
Hello, Marilyn Burridge, 42, Mostaway Road. I oppose all of it. I worry about the wildlife, I worry about the noise, worry about the traffic. We're very happy up there. I just don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Come on up.
My name is Roger Mendez. I live at 28 Mostaway Road, so I'm right next to the park, just below Lori. If you know that area, you know the water, everything drains down, and then it puddles, pools in our area, and then it continues down to Darrow Pond. It also goes across the street east into Latimer Brook. So my concern is the parasites and everything flowing into our property and, and down into the pond and polluting. There was a recent study back in 2020, and they, they took samples from over 3,000 dogs in 288 dog parks across the country, and 85% of the dogs tested positive for intestinal parasites. So, you know, there's definitely a problem.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do. Yep.
Would you mind just give it to the secretary, and she'll enter it into the minutes?
Madam Chair? Exhibit one?
So I, I welcome anyone who wants to come to the area and walk the property. So I live in kind of a bowl. Lori lives above me, and so I'm kind of in this bowl, so all the water comes right down. So it is a concern, and of course, the noise. I love dogs. I grew up with dogs. I, you know, I've had dogs my, most of my adult life. Lori has dogs. A lot of the neighbors walk by, you know, with their dogs, and we chat, so there's not a problem with the dogs. It's just the noise and possibly the environmental issues that we definitely could have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have the neutral? Are you a neutral or against?
Against.
Matthew Walsh, 43, Mostaway Road. I want to start kind of reiterating the traffic concerns. I mean, it's a small road. There's multiple points in the road where two cars can't pass. In fact, I have a six-year-old daughter in first grade, and the school bus can't even come down the road. We have to drive her all the way down to Darrow's Ridge every morning and every afternoon to pick her up, because the transportation coordinator says the road has been deemed unsafe for the school buses. So I think adding any traffic onto that road, especially if we have people coming from out of town, they don't know the area, I'm not sure if there's any towns to the north that have dog parks, or if we're going to draw more people coming from that direction too. I think more traffic in the area on the road that can't handle it is not the way to go without a more definitive plan of how the road is going to be improved over time. Other concern is, I've been following this since the Darrow's Pond Master Plan Committee was together, and I have concerns about how this plan doesn't really go along with what was discussed at that point. One of the major concerns then was the wildlife, including the New England Cottontail, and the issue of having off-leash dogs in the park affecting the habitat of the rabbits. It was even discussed at one point banning dogs outright from the property during nesting season to alleviate some of those concerns. So now the fact we're talking about having a dog park on the property, which will inevitably lead to having more dogs up there, and more likely more off-leash, is going to be more of a concern for the wildlife, on top of the bears, the bobcats, the deer, the turkeys, all the other animals that are up there regularly that I see coming through my yard. Also concerned with the noise, my property is directly across the street from the entrance. I also hear the fireworks at night, the ATVs and dirt bikes racing up and down the road, going into the park at night, the liquor bottles all over the side of the road every weekend. The park is not well-maintained as it is. It's not patrolled, and I'm not sure having more people go up there and find out about it is going to help that at all. But the main point I want to make is that knowing a town is going to be any worse off if the dog park does not get built at this property, but it's going to have serious effects on all the neighbors in the area, and it's going to hurt our property values. There's going to be accidents on the road. It's not going to be safe for me to take my daughter to ride her bike up and down the road anymore, and I think the commission should take that into account.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have the neutral people?
Hello, Ira Sitgo, 28, Darrow's Ridge, East Line. So yeah, I'm ambivalent. I'm a property owner across the pond and a dog owner, and I've used that parcel a lot walking my dog. It's a great place. My main concerns are, number one, noise. I was thinking that, well, dog parks, a lot of times, dogs aren't barking that much, but still, when they do, the sound travels right across that pond. I mean, it's like a, it's like a cement floor, so sounds travel. There's people across the pond now who have dogs, and when they bark, I can hear them barking as if they're in my backyard. So that's a little bit of a concern. My, my other concern is, has always been the maintenance of that parking lot. Walking there, I always pick up trash as I'm walking up there to put in there. There's like one or two garbage cans that I think are picked up maybe once a week. There's youth hanging out up there and just smashing bottles and drinking, and there's no control over that. I understand the concept of more use will sort of dissuade that. I'm not so sure. My questions for Jerry are, with this property, is there going to be, you said it would be maintained daily, but is that also not just the dog poop pickup, but there's going to be human trash pickup that goes along with that? There's a garbage can. Is there going to be daily trash pickup for, for human trash as well? Is that planned?
Excuse me, sir?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Good points.
Oh, I think I had another point, too.
Give it to your neighbor.
Can I ask the committee one more question? I guess, I just, as far as signage, was there a plan for signage? I heard something about dog tags, East Line tags being, being needed. Is that going to be a requirement to use the park? Is there going to be a sign saying you have to have a dog tag?
Anyone else that's neutral? And now the fours. Come on up.
Glad I came. I am Deborah Stewart Van Orden. I live at 21 Hillwood Drive, which is a, not as densely populated area as some parts of our town, but at 6:45 in the morning, I can hear dogs barking in my neighborhood. I didn't buy property, a budding town property. That's one of the risks when you're against a state park or a publicly-owned piece of land. So I have a dog. He's 10 pounds. His name's Billy Ray. He got bit behind Deerfield Village. It's a little bit emotional. $12,000 later, he's in one piece. He was in the hospital for five days, and he went back because of autoimmune situation. The owner of the other dog was a resident near Deerfield Village just across the way, and there's actually a little open-area dog park with no fence there. And he had a big dog, and he had some little dogs, and he let his dog out habitually in the backyard there, and I would walk my dog on leash there, and my friend was walking my dog that day. So spare you the trauma. He came through it. The other dog's owner was very responsible. He said, "I'm just doing what I would hope somebody would do for my dog." So we came through it. I've been to many dog parks, Florida, Waterford, Groton. Florida's restaurants are very dog-friendly, and in East Lime, I believe, a lot of them are dog-friendly outside at this point. So I've been to dog parks that are very well-maintained in the sense that a dog park should be. Yes, there are flat areas. Yes, sometimes there are puddles. They're not flat. Some of them have small dog areas, some of them do not. A lot of them have on-leash trails nearby. There's a lot of peer pressure, and there's a lot of community good. If I saw somebody with a dog pooping, I'd be like, "Oh, you're sitting at the picnic table talking, your dog's pooping," and I'd get up and go, go get that. I've never been to a dog park that's full of poop. I've always been to dog parks that if there's one poop in the corner, that's unusual. So I'm not worried about feces. I personally know that when I go to a dog park with my dog, that there are risks. My dog walked down my street and ate some goose poop and had a parasite, and my veterinarian told me that I'm not a bad dog owner because of that. I take my dog on leash to Rocky next State Park off-season. I take my dog to Cine Beach. I know Cine Beach is used as an off-leash off-season place, and if there's poop there, it's because it's not a dog park. And I think having a dog park for specific use will concentrate the responsible dog owners to create this peer-pressure society where people are happy running their dogs that need their, their energy out. I babysat a Husky for a submariner for four and a half months, and I couldn't have done it without open spaces. And the people who don't have close access to a close dog park take their, their dogs places they shouldn't go and let them off-leash. I hate it on the trails when my dog's on leash. "My dog's friendly" is the cliche, and that's not okay. And I tell people that, and I peer pressure the people that I say, see, and I say, "It's not okay. This is an on-leash situation." So I think people know the risks when they go there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Laura Schultz, 79 Dean Road. First, I do have a question for you all, because I honestly don't know. When the Darrow's Pond Committee was formed and the plan was put together, what was the traffic study in terms of that, of what that was going to add? Because it's passive recreation, so what it was going to be, you know, the frisbee golf and the hiking and everything, what was looked at there when that was approved?
We wouldn't have an answer for that. That's a question for the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
Which perhaps the chair may ask.
All right, yeah. I just wasn't, because I honestly didn't know. And admittedly, I am part of the Dog Park Subcommittee. I'm the mother of one of the scouts who worked on this project and kind of helped get things going, and they're building the agility equipment. But just to speak to the noise, I totally get it. I live on Dean Road, like, in the middle between Boston Post and Society, and it's nothing but noise nonstop. People behind me have a dog. The man and the dog fight all day. There's a rooster. They got their kid a duck call recently, so it's just like a cacophony of sound. And I think you're going to find that anywhere when you go out. It's in my own home, and when you go to McCook's and things like that, there's going to be a lot of noise, because we all like to live outside. But... My three minutes are up. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Danielle Moseapple, 22, Old Black Point Road. I wasn't planning to speak, so this is probably going to be just vomit here, but I am part of the Dog Park Subcommittee as well. My daughter also is one of the Girl Scouts who's been working really hard and done a ton of research on this. I am actually not a dog owner. I have been in the past, but I am still completely for this. I have also opened dog parks all over the place. I feel like, in general, dog owners are very responsible, and putting a dog park in place is only going to make that property better. Research that I have done shows that actually dog parks increase property value, as do any parks. So I'm not sure where that fallacy is coming from, but that was the research that I did. I know there's a lot of concerns about things that are already happening up in that area, but that has nothing to do with the dog park, so that is a whole different, you know, bag of worms there. And I do think that bringing responsible recreation to that area will be very beneficial. I know there's a noise complaint or issues, but as others have said, there's noises all around town, and typically, dog parks are not overly noisy, and if it's noisy, it's during the day. So it's not while you're trying to sleep, because it's closed. What else did I want to say? I know, I know, I know. Maybe that's all I wanted to say. I've already forgotten everything I've said. But I really do think overall, the community is in favor of this. When we, the girls made a survey, we sent it out to people, and people were heavily in favor of a dog park. And we've, we have worked for two years, 10 years for you, and done as much research as we can, and we really feel like this is the best place in town to, to put it, and it would benefit the community greatly.
Thank you. I'm just going to say this. These families, these four families, they're, these girls have come to every meeting for about two years, and they never miss a meeting, and I know that I should be up there. I'm sorry. I won't say anymore, but I, they're, these Girl Scouts, they have my heart. Anyone else? Okay, folks, thank you. Can I have a push to close?
Madam Chair, I might want to give Jerry an opportunity for any rebuttal comments. He may have or address any questions. That would be appropriate at this time.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malone. Follow-up question on Mostaway Road and road safety. We heard some concerns about that. I'm a little bit familiar with the road, but I, I also know, so what, what do you have on roads, specifically road safety?
So, again, we're, we're increasing the parking spaces from six, six or seven to 10. So, you know, we're not, we're not expecting, you know, you know, a tenfold increase in traffic on Mostaway Road or anything like that. We're talking about, you know, a number of cars throughout the day that, you know, certainly that road does have issues. And as I mentioned before, when we start implementing the, the master plan, and if we add the other amenities up there, the, you know, expanded hiking trails, the disc golf course, the outdoor classroom, those types of things, once those things are added and the use increases, I think absolutely the town is going to have to do something to Mostaway Road to accommodate increased traffic at, you know, once the level of use of the park gets to that point. I don't think, you know, again, the, the amount of increased traffic we're talking about here is, you know, potentially, you know, a few cars every hour during the daylight hours. It's not, it's not a, you know, a huge increase in the traffic situation from the discussions that we've had.
I have, since we can rebuttal, I just have one quick question. To the mothers in the back with the daughters and the Girl Scouts, during your two years' worth of research that they've done, did you ever once talk to a veterinarian about a dog park? Just curious.
No, because if I were to build a playground, I wouldn't talk to a pediatrician about the playground, so I didn't feel like, that's just one person's opinion again. So we went through, like, the ASPCA and things like that to work with specifically dogs in dog parks.
Just one data point. I, I take my dog to the veterinarian. I'm registered with my dog in town. Been here for 10 years. I've talked to my veterinarians about taking my dogs to dog parks, and they say as long as they're up to date on their shots, that there are... And they say as long as they're up to date on their shots, that there are risks. I mean, humans get sick at school.
Thank you. That's, thank you very much. That's it.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Can I ask a motion to close or to continue?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and... Go ahead.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries 600. At this point, we can open the regular meeting, which is the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission to offend Section 1 by adding the... Oh.
That's been continued, Madam Chair.
You took that off. Wait, sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
Uh, 4B, application of Jerry Loken for East Lime Parking Rent for special permit under Section 20-1F of the East Lime Zoning Regulations for property located at 16 Mostowey Road, East Lime Assessors Map 40.0 Lot 5.
Madam Chair, I just want to note that you have 65 days from the date of the close of the public hearing to achieve a decision.
Okay. Commission, comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable. I'd rather, um, take this up at the next meeting so that we can have some time to digest some of the information that we've gotten tonight, particularly the study that was admitted as evidence. Yeah, there's a lot to think about here, a lot more than I thought there would be.
I agree with Denise. I have that same opinion, especially the piece of literature that the gentleman gave Exhibit 1. Well, Exhibit 4 and 5. Yeah, I would like to read that before I go any further.
I, I think it's easy and it's always tempting to, to take these discussions outside zoning and into, into discussions about health and safety and all that sort of thing. But just from a zoning and real estate standpoint, uh, the gentleman, I'm forgiving, I've forgotten your name, made a point that kind of resonated, that no one will be in any way harmed if this thing is not built. But if it is built, the property owners around it will be harmed. And, and that has stuck with me. And, and I don't, uh, it, it's going to be a hard sell for me. I don't think the benefit in this case outweighs the, outweighs the damage. I mean, there's, it, it, and Mr. Peck's point that these places tend to be in places that are a bit more already developed uh, was, was also well taken. Waterford 1 on Clark Lane, uh, I, I, I mean, you put this thing, I think ideally in the middle of an industrial area or, or a commercial area, not in the middle of a very quiet, what, what ought to be a quiet woodland. It, it seems uniquely ill-placed to me. Masal, thank you.
The, um, uh, the, the plans are for this to be a, a parking rec area and it is going to be developed. And I know people, you know, that live in an area don't want development. And I understand that. I, I feel similar. But something's going to go there. Um, and I think sometimes you got to, you know, weigh, is a dog park better or worse than what else would take its place? One of the concerns I have is, is the road. And, and I did hear a couple of comments about that. I, I, um, I know that, I also heard that i-if there's more use, they're going to have to expand the road. And we have ruled against things for road safety. And, um, and, and I think, do you, do you build the park and then enhance the road? Or do you enhance the road and then build the park? And that's something that I'm, I'm trying to weigh on, on my mind. That's all.
My two cents is I have concerns about the road. Since Bill Mostowey is my great uncle, I know the road. Also, water runoff is a huge deal to me. Animal feces, all animals. We're not going to be picky about dogs here. It's all a big deal about anything entering our water system, which impacts the health and welfare of not only the town of East Lime, but the people that use the sound, the river, Waterford. So this is a huge, huge thing to be asking for. And I, I think that, uh, we have 65 days to think about it. And my two cents is that we, uh, put this decision off until it can be rescheduled.
A reminder that Deb did a lot of work on wells and well safety in the northern part of town as well.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make, to give a vote for myself tonight. I, 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 I think I have enough information. So if anybody else feels that way.
Go ahead.
You want me to tell you what I want to vote? I'm voting against it. And I'm voting against it because of the water. Are we calling for a vote tonight or are we... No.
No, I think, I think this is just general discussion.
No, but we can vote for it tonight if we choose to. If we choose to vote that, if we take a vote, that we vote tonight, we can do it.
Do you want to vote? Do I make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote tonight on the dog park.
Okay. I'll second it.
Well, that, that's meaningless. I make a motion for or against. Then we'll vote on it.
Well, I, I did vote against it just now. And then Mr. Aliska wants me to make a motion.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm okay with taking the 65 days.
Oh, no, I don't want to take the 65 days. I don't think we need the 65 days.
The motion is to deny the application.
Yes.
So, so, um, excuse me, Madam Chair, you would need a full motion if somebody wants to read off of the, my memo. There's a suggested motion for and against with conditions if it was to be approved. So somebody should make a motion. You should be seconding and you should call a vote.
I make a motion to deny the application of Jerry Loken for East Lime Parks and Recreation for special permit under Section 20.1-F of the East Lime Zoning Regulations for property located at 16 Mostowey Road, East Lime Assessors Map 40 dot zero Lot 5. Denial for the following reasons: the environment, I think it's going to be really hard to police that area, um, for a lot of the, the road, um, the noise. I mean, this was a highly attended public hearing and we don't see that very often. So thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, and so I, I, that's why I vote no. And also to the wildlife. I mean, we can't just keep displacing them, you know, all the time, you know? I mean, what do we, you know, I just... I'm sorry?
I said you just make a devotion here.
Yeah. Well, it says here reasons one.
You got a second? She was adding 1, 2, and 3.
Yeah, 1, 2, and 3.
And do we have a second, Madam Chair?
Do we have a second?
You do.
Can I second it?
Yep.
I can second it. I also am, think we should deny this petition. In favor?
Where can we go? Is there a... We'll call for a discussion. Comments?
Comments, go for it.
Yeah, I, again, I, I'm listening to the neighbors, uh, which we always have to do. And, uh, Paul Formaker, if he's here, he, he wouldn't confirm what I'm going to say. And the only thing I recall talking about, uh, in regards to the use of Darrell Pond is the source of water and for open space. Going up and down that road, um, the more activity that is organized up in this 300 acres, the more the chance of this town going to have to spend a million dollars to widen that road. So these are the things I'm thinking about. And I, I think I would have closed it as well.
Okay, everyone, some vote officially?
Um, yeah, there's one more comment. I, we did talk about water quality. I, I don't know if I share the same risk. I think it's going to be cleaned up, but we did talk about that. And it, it is something that's out there. We did talk about road safety and that is a big thing for us. And we did hear from the neighbors. And, uh, I, I'm thankful for Deb's motion and I...
Thank you, Ms. Aliska.
Okay, let's take a vote. Mr. Peck?
Against.
Or against it?
Against.
Against. Mr. Foley?
Well, let's, let's, let's try and get this right. We are voting in favor of the motion, which is to deny the application. So you're voting in favor.
So, Madam Chair, you're calling a vote in favor of the motion, which is to deny.
Okay, let's, let's get this straight.
Yes.
Let's make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
It's really perfectly simple. The motion is to deny the application. So if you voted yes, we can return it. Yeah.
So we would like to, I personally would vote to deny the application.
So...
But the motion is to deny it. So we need to say yes or no. We're denying it. So...
All those in favor, move into the night. Raise your hand. Aye.
Of what? Yeah, moving to deny. There you go. Raise, I guess, raise your hand.
So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6, 0, 0.
So the motion is to deny and it's, it's 6, 0, 0.
6, 0, 0.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chairman. We will publish next...
Do we have to push in reasons 1 and 2 that Deb added?
I did. I think we... Yeah, they're on the record.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, we will publish next Thursday. Publication, I have to publish it and you need to tell me next Thursday is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So we want to take a one-minute break, Madam Chair, so the room can clear and we can get on to the last item.
We got one more item on there.
Let's just do it.
All right, moving along.
Is anyone here for the application of Mel Weiss?
Yes. Yes. Mel Weiss is here. Mel Weiss.
Hi, guys.
Yes. Okay.
So we're going to take a two-minute break.
Yo, take a break.
Take a break, sorry.
No, no, it's all good.
Oh, it's added for nothing.
I didn't take, you guys, I was very entertaining.
We tried.
Hard work.
I don't know. Chair may have left. He'll come back.
It's not about the dog park. It's about one inch. You guys, you guys. Nancy. No, no, no.
Uh, thank you, Bill. That's what I just said. So we have a 10-minute, 9-minute break. Thank you.
I have one more. If, if this is closed, motion's closed. We're talking about, it's saying we talked in... It's, it's done. We voted. Well, we're talking about the violation.
You're not supposed to, in case they sue. All right, who's that?
He lives at Norma's.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
I'd like to reconvene. And it is time for the application of Mel Weiss for the Coastal Area Management Review for demolition of an existing single-family dwelling.
Mr. Weiss?
Yep, sir. There's a memo from me.
Let me finish.
Nancy.
Oh, oh.
Well, you're over there. I thought you were over here.
No, I, I wasn't even answering her. No.
Okay, so this is an application for demolition of an existing single dwelling and construction of a new single-family dwelling for the property located at 59 Cory Dock Road, Niantic Assessors Map 22.1 Lot 12.
Yes, remind the remote, please.
All righty. Uh, memo, East Lime Zoning Commission, William Moll Holling Zoning Official, Coastal Area Management Review, 59 Cory Dock Road, Niantic, dated September 29, 2025. As the commission is aware, the coastal site plan reviews are a state-mandated program authorized in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statute. This statute delegates legal authority to zoning commissions to adopt regulations and regulate activities not otherwise exempted, occurring above the CJL or the coastal jurisdiction line as identified by the Connecticut DEEP and within the defined coastal boundary of their respective communities to protect coastal resources and ensure compliance with CAM Act coastal goals and policies. The board is charged with review of coastal site plans and may approve, modify, or deny activities proposed after evaluating the specific site and considering the potential effects, both beneficial and adverse, of the activities on coastal resources and their consistency with applicable state coastal goals and policies. In acting on a coastal site plan, the commission must state its findings and reasons for the decision. To approve, the board must find that the proposed activity is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and standards and whether or not any potential adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water development are acceptable. The board should consider characteristics of the site, including the location and condition of the onsite coastal resources, if any. The commission must find in, in approval that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the act and that all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent activities. In this application, Mel Weiss has applied for a CAM site plan review to demolish the existing home at 59 Cory Dock Road. He is proposing to con... He is proposing to construct a new home in its place. The home will be 35 feet by 64 feet, two-story structure. The property fronts on the Niantic River to the east. The home is on a bluff which is approximately 18 feet above the river. The lower area adjacent to the river is at an elevation two and consists of pre-existing concrete landing, ledge to the north, and a slope from the landing to the house site, 18 feet above. This application identifies the following coastal resources: general resources adjacent to the site, coastal hazards, development, developed shorefront, coastal waters are adjacent. The potential adverse impacts on coastal resources are described in the application as not applicable, and that is because the affected redevelopment location is significantly elevated above the direct shorefront, and there will be no site disturbances above the ridgeline. Furthermore, the applicant proposes to establish significant soil and erosion controls by constructing a straw waddle barrier around the construction site. The applicant is here this evening and will give a presentation. Upon completion of the presentation, the commission will need to make a finding as to whether the application is consistent with all of the applicable goals and policies of the CAM Act.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Hey, how you guys doing? So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, zoning commission here at Eastlime. You guys do a lot of hard work, and it's important work. You know, I bought this property, it's a lifelong dream of mine to live underwater in Eastlime, I've been a Eastlime resident for 20 years, football coach, lacrosse coach, volunteer for a lot of different activities, I built a lot of nice amenities here in town, I built the boardwalk, I did the bluffs, I did the yacht club, a lot of, you know, I'm a builder. I, when this property, this property's been vacant for over nine years, it's destroyed, it's in a bad shape. I purchased it, been, you know, I've actually been looking at it, because I live right across the street on a hill in Eastlime, I built a house there and raised my family. I, you know, so I hired professional engineers, architects, and also marine coastal engineers from Daco to develop this site, to make sure it's, does fit into all these applications that, what you just read thoroughly, and I think we fit 100% right within the regulations of the CAM, and I just want to say that I do understand that there's a lot to consider when you're looking at anything to do with coastal resources or any resources at all in our town. But basically, I'm here to say that, you know, I proposed my application, it's a pre-existing home, pre-existing bulkhead, they had other uses on a waterfront, I'm a professional developer, I protect the resources through all ENS controls, through engineering controls, and this product, you know, my house is gonna be co-costetic with all the houses, and also in, you know, be in, be in good harmony with what our road at Cory Dock Road looks like. But I'm also gonna be very conscious that it is waterfront property, and I'm a boater, I love the water resources, and I would protect them as much as I possibly could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Nancy, I'm sorry, I was, I thought you asked how to spell, how to pronounce his last name, there's so many people talking, and I was just trying to answer your question when I said...
Oh, I thought you were asking me to talk about my project, sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to let her know, I wasn't trying to be rude to her or anything like that. We're good.
Okay.
Commission, questions or comments?
This is not the Cory Dock, is it?
Yes, it's Cory Dock Road, yes.
No, Cory Dock itself.
Oh, no, Cory Dock is north, probably about 250 feet, maybe 300 feet north. Yeah. This is, this is well elevated, this is about 18 feet above grade. Cory Dock is a, is a community, which is, what I'm not part of, that there's a few residential units that are, that are, have access in that area, that's not us. Yeah.
So the existing house was abandoned for nine years, it's probably have septic that's subpar, and...
I've, 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 sorry, go ahead, sorry, Mr. Listick.
Brought up to standard and...
Yes, of course, I've been, I've been, I've talked to Danielle, which is part of the Legulate, and then, so, and I've dealt with bill joint in many of the different projects I've had. My goal is, obviously, I'm not gonna purchase and, you know, invest a lot of money into a new property and not have a septic system that's not, not the standard. And obviously, she wouldn't let it either, I mean, she's...
Sounds like this is a better plan than anything else.
Yeah, exactly, it's gonna, it's gonna increase the septic system, not decrease it.
Yep. Out of curiosity, is this gonna be in the same blueprint as the old house?
Very similar, the only, the only difference is, it's, so, the, we're actually bringing it a little further back from the shoreline, and I'm extending, there's gonna be a garage that goes closer to the road line, and it, and that's, that's all within the zoning regulations, we will not build outside the footprint of the zoning regulations. I am actually taking a house further off the shoreline, only because I want to enjoy a yard, and, and, and also, I just don't think, you know, back in the 70s or 60s when this was built, I don't think they were thinking about that, I think, you know, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nope.
No, I'm going to stay on the application, I'm too excited.
Yeah, I'll be with it. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve the application of Mel Weiss for control of the CAM area management review for demolition of existing single-family dwelling and construction of a new single-family dwelling for property located at 59 Cory Dock Road, Niantic, Assessors Map, 22.1, Lot 12.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero, zero, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your time.
We appreciate, we appreciate. Next. We need to approve the minutes of 9:18:25.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
May I have a second?
A second? Somebody put a second in. Gosh, we are crazy up here today.
Great, don't fool around here.
Start a different second.
All righty. What, what do you need a minute for, Jim?
Oh, approval of the dates.
Denise already checked them to make sure...
I just checked them, they look good to me. I make a motion that we approve this year's dates as written.
Second.
For the 26th calendar.
For the 1926 calendar. Motion carries.
19?
19.
I do that, too.
We are just a hot mess tonight, folks.
The motion carries.
Yes, it carried.
We're 25 years in, I'm still down.
I know, we're good, we're hanging in there.
No, I'm gonna abstain, because I came late.
Okay. So, we need to approve the minutes.
I made a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And abstain, I came late.
And one extension. Motion carries, five... Zero, one, we're good. Okay, old business, we have none, do we?
No.
Nope, you're on a roll.
Subcommittee, we have none at the moment. New business?
Nothing.
Any business on the floor, if by the majority vote of the commission?
No.
Correspondents?
None.
Good. Public delegations, public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission regarding zoning lien use items that are not on the agenda. Okay. We have no public delegations, Mr. M. Holland, as owner official.
I have nothing this evening, we're just, we're busy, we study, as you know, so we can move on to the next.
Which is Ms. Hardy, it's your turn, as our ex officio.
Good evening, it's been a long day, and into the evening, but I think the board should be very pleased at the number of people that came out this evening to speak to you, and it's extremely important that we do hear from our residents, and all too often, I get phone calls saying, oh, I didn't know there was gonna be this hearing, I would've gone, so I think you got a good sense of the feelings of the public, which is really important to us as public officials. And secondly, the Board of Selectmen have had a busy schedule. Based on the comments tonight, I will be speaking with the chief of police regarding comments made by the public this evening regarding conditions up in that area. I did meet with the police chief, chief of police earlier this evening, and so tomorrow I will call the office and just relay some of the current comments that we heard this evening regarding activities and things that are going on up there that obviously need more supervision.
Excellent.
Okay, that's it, unless anybody has a question for me?
Any update on the moratorium regarding affordable housing?
I think that...
I actually met with Tim Blaisdell today, he is working on it. You have to put together additional information, because he has to present to the state of Connecticut, and that requires additional work on his behalf, he is actively working on it, I have spoken with him, I know he's working on it, I've been to over to law for him, so they're putting that together to make the presentation to the state, because the state has to accept that, and they have to go along with it.
Do we have a timeline for that, Bill, by any chance?
I don't know of any specific timeline.
The state have a timeline for anything.
But that's my understanding of the status.
It's a high priority.
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you for that.
It is a priority, I've been told that.
Okay, zoning board liaison to planning commission, I'm on for the 14th of October, Mr. Lyska, you're on for the 10th of November, Ms. Markowitz, you're on for December 9th, okay? If you have something to do, I'll cover it for you, because I miss time. Comments from the chairman, we have none. Our next meeting is October 16th, here at 7:30. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, another six, zeros, zero, we're on a roll.
Well, tonight...
Thank you, everyone.